This is supposed to be a workroom meeting on solar projects on Coyle Hill and Cutler Road Extension, but we only have three here right now.
You do have a comments and concerns period, right?
Yeah, she has it.
Well, I took it off today because we were supposed to just have a workroom meeting.
Do you want to do comments first?
Yeah.
We'll do comments first.
Okay. Well, we know that you're in a moratorium right now for solar and everything, but we just wanted to kind of ask some questions or just kind of get some information from you and stuff like that. We're thinking about, we want to do a small solar system. I talked with Bill Ramsey and Bill was the one who mentioned that I should come to just, you know, some sort of a meeting or something like that. Right next to Highway Barn, so I'm going to just turn it over to John who's going to probably be my partner in this deal, so explain it.
Yeah, so with the moratorium that's in place, you know, I know there's some limitations and everything, but on his property, the Burbank, that's what you refer to it as, the Sandbank Burbank.
Purple?
Yeah. 177 Brookfield Road.
Yeah, right, right, right.
You know, the size of the system, we've got a megawatt size solar system, 1.23 megawatt DC, and, you know, it'd be on his property. And, you know, the goal here is to figure out, you know, what kind of restrictions are there at this point? Is it completely shut down until the moratorium is over?
Yeah, we can't take anything in. I mean, we can't accept any plans. We really can't hear a lot about it. It was just an overall comment thing here.
And then, as I've heard, there's a limitation on the amount of projects in place, and so I guess if there is a limit, and though there is a...
It hasn't gone through yet.
Okay.
That's...
We haven't heard back from the town attorney yet either, right?
No, I don't think so.
On the bylaw? We haven't received anything back from, um, Copeland on, it was submitted as written. They were going to get back to us, it's by law, and we've heard nothing from them.
That's if that new bylaw goes into effect.
Right. So there's two things that's happening that's affecting the law right now. Is he going to moratorium until, what, May 30th?
May 31st, I think.
May 31st, which is the end of the month, and then they got a new solar bylaw.
Yes, I remember.
That's been submitted, that's been submitted to the planning board for representation at town meeting that was formulated by the solar council and that had been sent out to various law firms, being checked for legalities and so forth like that. So those are the two things that could impact a solar plan going forward in the town. But I think if you're under one megawatt, then you fall under a small solar field, and then so the laws change for that.
I was kind of surprised. I looked at the proposed changes that you're proposing and talking to Bill at one point, Ramsey, about that you were going to allow, like gravel pits, stuff that was like not, you were trying to get away from using fields and you're trying to get away from cutting all those trees and stuff, so like a gravel bank is something that's already been disturbed. So he made it kind of sound like that was going to be allowed use.
I haven't, we haven't gotten back the draft that was sent yet, so I don't know what's actually going to be allowed and not. I mean, we, the people that worked on this have done the very best that they can, and they've, what they've done is they've used other towns' bylaws as a lot of the meat of what they've put together, basically customizing it for the town of Warren. So we feel that it should be legal within the limits of the state law and how they propose the by right of solar, the solar industry. But until we hear back from them, I hesitate to comment on any of it because I don't know.
All of the proposal, the changes, I read all those pages and stuff, and it sounds like it's pretty limited and where it can and can't go anymore.
That's what they're trying to do.
It is, the bylaw is trying to limit it to the commercial zones of town.
So right down 67.
Both ends of 67, as you know where they are.
You want to put it right down to 67. Makes perfect sense.
But that's, you know, I mean, that's yet to be seen, that's still going to go through town meeting, that's still going to get approved by the attorney general. I mean, and then that's the other thing, too. These bylaws are really tricky, and the attorney general is, they've approved several bylaws and they've rejected several bylaws that were very similar in context. So it's kind of, it's kind of a gamble. Once it's passed, whatever's passed at town meeting, that goes to the attorney general. And as you know, they got 90 days to decide after that whether or not it's a legal bylaw or not.
So what happens, the moratorium runs out in the May and takes up 90 days.
And we'll take on projects as according to the bylaw that we've written, and then if the attorney general 90 days later changes those bylaws, then we'll have to abide by what they decide is legal and not legal. And that may change the ability for other projects to come into place.
I mean, I'm not technically in a commercial zone, but I've got a commercial business running.
Right. And you bring up a good point that I don't think was thought about because when you say to me that a gravel pit is already disturbed, well, it's scarified, and there's nothing left to it, it's durable. Will it eventually return to some sort of field or, you know, buried trees or prickles or grass or whatever? Yeah, I guess nature will take over at some point, but might be an ideal place to use these things.
Yeah. Well, that was what, like I say, I wasn't able to make your public hearing. It was all communications, so I wasn't able to get here. But I did, I spoke at length to Bill about, you know, what's going to change, and I was kind of told that, you know, gravel banks are one thing, it's going to be allowed because it's, it's just a, makes sense. I mean, I'm not going to just let it sit there when it's empty.
Nothing has it stands now that will add an allowed use.
Yeah, I don't know from what I read, what was submitted.
Right, it's not, it's not. I mean, it's very limited of what you can do, and then does even a number mention, like 18 sites total in the whole town? I think it only allows like three at one alarm, something like that, so...
Yeah, so, I mean, we were hoping to get it back from the attorney a couple of weeks ago already so we could sit there and then talk about it, and we could talk with the solar commission committee as well and talk about these things and what we want to do and see if there's any corrections that need to be, but we still haven't gotten it from the guy.
I just wish that everybody that doesn't want anything would get some money together and buy all this property, and then they could do whatever along with it. I mean, you're sitting there, you're paying taxes on all this stuff, and then something like that, to me, I mean, what I'm going to do over there is not going to be an ice on anyone, you know? You're next to Highway Barn, you're next to my other garage, so it's definitely commercial.
All of this, Mr. Fountain, would absolutely go away if the state would just allow the planning boards in cities and towns to do their job. But the state has decided that they're going to make it by right, and what they've done is they've left it to the towns to determine how they're going to keep it out of their town. So right now, you can put seven solar farms around a 10 home neighborhood, and you can't stop it.
Yeah.
And if you try to stop it, you're going to go to court, you know? But to me, that's saturation, and no neighborhood needs five, six, seven of them all around it because I think the values go to nothing. And then you have nothing. But yet, under the state law, it's perfectly allowable and, you know, the town doesn't really have a recourse to stop it other than trying to zone it out. And I think that's where the frustration of a lot of the residents that are having to deal with this, and I think that's where that comes from, is that they want to put it now in just two zones, both ends of 67, commercial. I know that I'm never in favor of zoning businesses out by zones, but we don't have any recourse on how to stop them at this point. So I think everybody's just kind of reaching for anything and everything. I got to be honest with you, I don't know what will absolutely stand up in a land court once they're challenged. I really don't. The state is very clear on what they want, and the attorney general is very clear on putting the state law on any bylaw that is submitted to them from a town, that there is a by right law in this state to allow solar to be built.
It's just too bad, like I say, you didn't allow sites in particular, like gravel pits or something that's...
It's not too late, though. I mean, that could be something that could be considered, I think.
Well, I don't know if it is too late because it's already been submitted now, right?
Would have to be amended on the floor.
Yeah.
I think that amendment would not change the scope of the article because you would just be adding a location to it or something.
Is amended next week or six months?
It would have to be amended on the town floor because the articles are already submitted, so you can't amend the article now. It would have to be amended on the town floor to include gravel pits or something like that. And that's something that I don't believe changes the whole scope of the article, so if it doesn't change the scope of the article, the amendment shouldn't be allowed to be voted on it on the floor.
Yeah.
And then you go from there. If the amendment is passed, then that would be, that language would be added.
But it will be until fall.
No, it'll be in May, in two weeks.
You want to make an amendment in two weeks?
The solar bylaw is being voted on at town meeting in two weeks.
Right, but will I make the amendment on the floor?
You would have to make the amendment on the floor. If the planning board can't act, you would have to make that amendment on the floor, that you want to include that in the locations of the bylaw. And you can talk more with Bill about that, and he can certainly give you a direction on how that might need to be worded. I'm not real familiar with the actual article right now to know exactly how, I mean, I'm pretty familiar with the bylaw. I'm not as sure how the motion has been worded, so, and I believe that that change would have to be in your motion to change the body or some language in the body of allowances.
And lastly, if there's going to be a limitation on the amount of projects, when would we submit for a project? Even if we can't submit it now, we have to wait until May 31st on that?
Well, basically, the projects are first come, first served, and that's, that's the way they are right now with all the solar companies. They come in here and they're, you know, they're basically trying to meet the requirements of the state to get the state funding under the programs. So, you know, consequently, we could have 15 companies that are in the process of getting permits, and eight of them could get permits, and if the project runs out, there's a possibility that some of them won't get built until the next round of funding. You know, and that's what, that's what the rush is, is they want to get in before the funding.
Can I submit that like today, tomorrow, or do I have to wait until May 31st?
You have to wait until the moratorium is over. We can't accept anything until May 31st, well, June 1st.
It's going to be first in line when everybody shows up today.
You know, until, you know... And, you know, from there, it just depends on how it comes. It just depends on how complicated the project is, how fast it can move.
The line is saturated. It's going to be something. National grid and high school don't want any more in this area. All the blocks are filled up. Eight blocks and they're all filled.
Yeah, so, well, there's a big race right now to try and get the last of this smart project money, and of course, that's, you know, they're doing their due diligence in business, and you're going to do yours. And so there's a possibility that some of them won't get built because the project, you know, the plan will run out, but there's going to be another one. You know, the state's going to continue investing in solar, it's just a matter, and we've got some solar guys here now, so they could probably tell us better. But it's just a matter of what the next plan is or what the next program is and how the funding is going to come down, and then you guys give your projects to that. So that's, that's the way that goes, so... So we don't really know how many projects will get built or how many will be applied for, or, you know, we just don't know at this point.
Can I have one more comment about something completely different?
Pass the chair.
The cell tower that the board allowed to be built, I'm just coming as a, you know, past board member, and I know we were crucified by a lot of people because we allowed, we changed the zoning to allow no more cell towers. And the reason why we did it is because exactly what's happening right now. That's why, because these landlords would come up, they stick these things up everywhere, and there was no carriers going on them. So I think part of what the planning board should have done was put a, you know, you've got to come to us with a certain contracts from different carriers that you're definitely going on that stick, otherwise it's just there for nothing.
We were told too. We were told Verizon and T-Mobile will have it be signed up. So we voted on that based on...
Well, based on the fact that they already had contracts.
That's the problem. That's the problem. They lie. I mean, that's exactly what the planning board in the past, we were starting looking like a porcupine. Yeah, we were looking like a porcupine. They were putting them up everywhere, one on Southbridge Road, way up on the top. There, there's nobody out there that would come in on these things, so that's when we put the...
Massachusetts could be more like New York. You put a cell tower in New York, you can't be seen.
Yeah.
It's going to be hidden.
Yeah.
Cannot be seen by any highway, by any home, by nothing.
It just seems like, do you have any teeth to go after them to make them put something on it now?
It's like a business, it's like any other business. We've given a permit to a business to, you know, to open up in the, in the Mill District. They've had it for what, two years? They've done nothing, they've not moved in. I mean, we can't force them to do what they say they're going to do.
When you apply for building permit, you have to have, you have to show substantial work or some work being done.
Well, the building permit, though, Jim, is only for the tower.
But you allowed a cell tower. You didn't allow just a stick to be stuck up there.
No, we allowed a cell tower, and now it is. You bring a cell tower, and until somebody hangs their equipment on it, it'll always be a cell tower. It's just not a working cell tower.
I don't look at it as a cell tower, I look at it as a rod.
Yeah, well, I would tend to agree with you, but, you know, in the eyes of the law, that's what they say.
I've said my piece, I'm leaving.
So I, no, I appreciate your intelligence that you bring to us all the time, and you've been around a long time.
The board got crucified for the, for the change in zoning, and I think rightfully so, we did what we should have done.
Oh, we'll make sure we bring that up and talk about it.
Unless they had contracts to support it, though.
That's what they, they do it all the time, they're just landlords, they just...
Might need to burn as landlords.
No one's going to put it there.
Ask the guy on Southbridge Road way up on the top, he'll tell you the same thing. He has no carriers on his either, so... Okay, good night. Good to see you, thank you, good to see you.
Okay. On special permit application number 284 and 285, site plan approval at number 5253, ZPT for 334 Coyle Hill Road. We have the paper here and everything. Do you want to go over what's been submitted for order of conditions?
Maybe it'll just be easier to ask if anybody has opposition to any of these or anything they want to add.
Yeah.
Rather than going over every one of them.
Sure.
And then you can...
Well, that's what I meant.
Yeah, you can stop wherever you would like.
So we mentioned the catch basins, we say retention basins and catch basins in two different spots, so I just wanted to make sure that it's clear.
So they should be retention ponds is what they should be.
They should be that. So we say on number 12 that they should be inspected after a major rainfall event.
That's the state's, that's it.
For the first two years, we have to add years, I'm guessing, because this is the first two.
What page is this?
Page six. And then on page seven...
That's not 12.
Yeah, shall inspect the basins and wells after a major rainstorm.
Okay.
And then on page seven, number five, we say every six months for the first five years.
That's our requirement. I think number 12 is the state's requirement.
Okay, so we have to put the state requirement in?
I don't think so. I think ours supersedes, and we can certainly just put ours.
It just seems a little confusing to me to have it both.
So you want 12 taken out?
Yes.
And five, and five put in?
Five left in.
Five left in on the other.
Yeah.
On page seven.
On page seven.
Five, five on seven.
Five on seven.
12 on six.
Don't get confused.
Yeah, number five is on page seven, number 12 on page eight.
So I'm taking 12 out.
And then number two on the special conditions, we say prior to earth disturbing activities?
Yep.
Well, that's confusing to me. So how, they have to disturb it to get started.
Basically, what we're saying is that the inspectors got to go out there and make sure they got all their sill bales and all that stuff in place before they stop moving dirt.
Okay, because they wouldn't have installed, are they going to install the erosion controls first?
Yes.
Before, so what constitutes disturbance? Is that trees?
No, I think it was for putting in the panels.
Actually installing the panels.
Yeah, they have to have, before they, before they start clearing the land, you know, scraping the land and doing all that, they have to have all of their...
But they can't put the erosion control in until they clear it.
Well, they can in some areas because you don't want anything, anything washing down into the, it's basically to protect all the wet areas.
They'll put that all in the longer wetlands.
So that way, anything that doesn't wash, doesn't wash into the wetland.
Okay. Other than that, we have to take bill off the signature page. Does he recuse himself?
Yes.
Do you have any questions? I'll have it off on the front.
I do one. I would be wondering...
I'll give you one.
I would be wondering if the board would, the hours of operation of this project were due to a heavily populated area, so I would be willing to set the working hours for this project. On page six again, the working hours, construction hours will be limited to Monday through Friday, 7:00 AM to 5:00 PM. No work on Saturdays, Sundays and holidays are prohibited, and it lists all the holidays. If any work will be performed beyond the permitted time, the applicant shall notify the board in writing within 24 hours of his or her intent. Because this project is not so heavily populated as to where it is on Coyle Hill, and it's so far behind and in the woods, I would allow, I would vote to allow Saturday work from 8:00 AM to 2:00 PM. And no Sundays and holidays. So the same Monday through Friday, 7:00 AM to 5:00 PM, add Saturday, 8:00 AM to 2:00 PM if the board so desires.
You can put it that way.
Yeah.
Yes?
Yes.
Yes, okay. And that was the only change, Madam Chairman, that I saw necessary to make.
Does your motion to accept this with the changes mentioned tonight?
Well, we'll wait, and I'll have it all ready for the next meeting.
Want to do it that way, vote at the next meeting so Bill can have some say as to whether or not to...
Yes, because he's going to stop by tomorrow, he can look things over.
He's recused, so he can, as he can.
But I can have this all ready for the next meeting and you can vote to accept it next time.
On the 20th?
20th. The 20th. Because next week, we don't meet on Monday, we meet on Tuesday at a town meeting.
Oh, that's right.
Where are we at, where are we at in time with the window?
6:30.
No, I mean with the necessity for this to be complete, because we have, what, 90 days?
We have 90 days.
Okay, so we're still within that window, okay. As long as we're within the window.
So we can vote on Coyle Hill next Monday?
Yep.
Not next, the 20th.
20th. And then you'll just do the changes.
I'll do the changes for that meeting, so you can vote on it and then vote to accept it, and then vote to do the decision.
That was the only...
Put it all at once, just in case something happens where...
Okay.
That was the only thing that I really saw, that and what Melissa had pointed out.
It's the same with the Cutler, Beaman Road, Cutler Road?
Yeah.
No, we're just working on it. So the next meeting will be a work meeting, so we'll save that.
So are there any comments on the Cutler Road extension? That we want to change?
I think I would have the same two comments.
Take that 12 out?
Yeah, it's written the same way.
Correct.
Use the number five inspections rather than number 12.
Yeah, because it's a basic form, and then you add...
And I would also be in favor of allowing Saturday work on that day from 8 to 2.
8 to 2, 8 to 2 or 8 to 12?
8 to 2.
Is that, you said on 2, the last one, too?
8 to 2.
I thought you said 12, okay.
No, because it's too hard to set up.
Yeah, right, 8 to 2 gives them at least a half a day's worth of work. 8 to 12 gives them an hour or two.
And then you just have to make the...
Take out 12.
Yeah.
Yep.
What's the other one?
Number 1.
Take out 12.
Take out 12 and keep 5, but we're going to change the work. It says retention basins?
Yeah, we're going to change it to retention pond. So that way, there's, because I used the word basin, and that can be just construed with extra basin, and that's different than a retention pond.
Okay.
Retention pond is a very...
And the solar guys laughing at me or whatever, because they know this is...
It's basins.
What is it?
Claro. 11.
If that's a catch basin, it's a weirdly established name.
Oh, number two, provided, so designated pullover areas will be provided in the construction area. Yeah, I see. I had a productive lunch today. Yeah. That's it, that's all I have.
So you'll just change all those on minimal?
I should do that.
And Bill's name should be recused on that one, too?
No.
No, he's okay on that one.
He was not okay with this one.
This is ZPT?
No, it's WA Farms Development.
Cutler Road?
Cutler Road, yeah.
Oh, okay, okay.
ZPT, I think.
Yeah.
Yeah, I put on the, page two, above the numbers, I put recused himself. On the back, I'll take it off. You want me to send them to you when I'm done, the updates, just send the whole thing or...
I'm good.
Yeah, no, I made my notes on mine, I'm good. You don't need to tie any more trees down.
That's my email.
Yeah, right, I'm glad you do, actually. I'm glad you emailed, because I don't print everything out, and I do collect print when I print to keep it down, but I'm glad you do it, you know, because we would kill a lot of trees.
I think I did, too. You look to step older.
I was looking at the number of plants in the office, like, oh my God.
Isn't that funny? The state wants us to be green, but they couldn't...
Yeah, I know.
Yeah, right, but there's a forest in our office and plants.
Okay. Motion to pay Kathy, two amounts is written.
Go move.
Second?
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
Aye. Sign the proposal for grave engineering.
Go move, Dan, too.
Second?
Second.
On favor?
Aye. Did you print the minutes?
Yeah, April 1st, April 8th.
So I don't know if you want to hold them, but you can read them over.
No, Bill's not here, I'd rather table them until he's there, because he was present for those minutes, so he should have the ability to read them and go over them before they're done.
So you can take them later if you want.
Yeah.
So I, yeah.
This is just for us to...
Yeah, just so you would have it. Everybody can get it.
Oh, that's the thing you gave me, yeah, that thing's really helping Andy.
Is this the response to Peter?
Yes.
Yeah, and I highlighted it because my copy comes up red, but unfortunately, when you recopy it, it doesn't. I don't want to use my printer to copy everything because my ink is very expensive. Not this, yep, one isn't, but mine is.
But we haven't heard back from our town lawyer yet?
Nope.
I've heard it.
Not that I know of, it's not called me.
So what happens? We go on the, they go on the floor with it and...
You can't hold on it, can you?
He'll be here, right?
Oh, yeah, we can approve whatever we want on the floor, it's whether or not the state will approve it after. I mean, everything's going to be overseen, so...
Yeah.
I mean, I would much rather go to the floor with legal opinion saying, yeah, this is really good, or this is okay, but this is kind of iffy, or, you know what I mean? But it doesn't look like we're going to get it from Copeland. I question whether or not we should be requiring with the firm on that.
Do we have other options or do we have...
I think we have to, because the contract...
Why are you handing it to you? It's you.
If contract run out, or does the contract run out?
I'm going a little overboard.
Because apparently, if you're going to do this, he doesn't respond to that, he doesn't respond to us.
No. Thing that we need is signed to. We have a... Of course, you do.
Slow to that.
I think it's a good idea because...
Yes.
No, well, the, the pit, it, it already destroyed the site.
And they'll stabilize it somewhat.
The solar panels are gonna, are gonna require grass or deep, so, and, so...
But I hope we shore them up.
I, I, I talked with Joyce the other day about that and they said that there's, you know, a plus, the idea is not the countries to put solar panels.
Yeah, right.
That's the fault. If there's open land, you know, buildings, um, in this case, pit will be perfect. Landfills.
Like the town dump?
You know, the CMRPC says...
So, there guys, is there anything you wanted or...
Um, no, I just didn't know, I, you know, so do we come next meeting, see if they sign the approval or something?
Okay, yeah, sorry about that.
No, no, no worries, I wasn't here anyway.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yeah, all right, so let's go.
CMRPC is with the idea of try to do everything you can...
Right.
But cut trees. That's, you know, if, if it's open land, you, you can get a better use of it. It's either going...
It's cheaper for them too, if they're using open land.
The land is usually already flatter, it's, it's been used for something, it's more roomed for it.
And the landowner's already cut.
You know, you have parking lots, you have building, mill, you know, big factories can have a lot of roof area, but don't destroy the, the forest. How can we call this green?
Okay.
It's color.
So, we're waiting on the minutes until, um, four twenty?
Yes.
And that's when the next meeting, no, the next meeting's the fourteen, sixteen thirty?
Right, six thirty.
Fourteen, she said?
Yes.
Just before town meeting?
Right.
Does tomorrow's town vote?
We're gonna have good luck with those meetings. Why do we meet here?
I'm making myself scared.
Somewhere else.
I'm around. I'm the fucking one.
Got a post where you made another...
So, remember town meeting, uh, voting tomorrow?
Yes, voting tomorrow, town meeting on the fourteen.
I'm supposed to work...
What time are we posted on the fourteen?
Six thirty. Do you wanna change it?
No, Mrs. Saponic doesn't know, so I'm gonna say it anyways.
Um, our amendment's gonna be, our articles on the special, but I'm not sure what time the special starts.
What, the bylaw is on the special?
No, 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 the one for the extra hours.
Oh, yeah.
The fiscal...
If I would've put the bylaw on the special, that wouldn't have...